Good evening and welcome to the May 21st, 2018 Gaston County Board of Education's regular meeting. I'd like to introduce our board members first. I'm Kevin Collier. The chair to my left is Mr. Jeff Ramsey, the vice chair. And I'm gonna start with Mr. Devene if you'll introduce yourself and the township you represent.
Please, yes, which township?
Justin Davis, South Point Township.
Terry Osree, Charitable.
Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Brent Moore, Crowers Mountain Township.
Doc Cherry, at large member.
Thank you, board members, and thank you folks for being here tonight. The first thing on the agenda is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you that you're with us. We thank you for your presence in our world in a time when we may not understand what is in our world. We ask that you be with this leadership tonight, allow them to have insight, patience, and strength. Please grant us a glimpse of your wisdom as we meet and discuss the work in support of all of our children, administrators, and teachers. We just thank you for those who've walked before us, Lord, and given us the ability to meet and to be free. Amen.
She is a third grade student at Belmont Central Elementary School, and we will have her up later for some more information, but she can start us off with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next order of business is to adopt the agenda. I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Terry makes a motion, Ms. Guthrie second. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. All right, the next item is good news, Mr. Booker.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, I want to invite Merritt to come back up with us. Again, it is Merritt McCott, who is from Belmont Central, and she is a third grader, which you all know means she got to participate in the Prouddest Kid in Gaston County essay contest. And she wrote about what she loves about living in Gaston County. This is part of our partnership with Gaston together, and it's designed to help all of our children learn about the community that they're involved in. As the contest winner, Merritt received a framed certificate and also money towards a trip to Raleigh to meet with Gaston County's legislative delegation. Merritt and her family will travel to Raleigh this summer. We're very proud of Merritt, and we know that she has a bright academic future ahead of her. So, Mr. Devene?
Merritt, congratulations to you. That is outstanding. Who has been your biggest mentor teaching you to write? Do you know?
Well, in first grade, Mrs. Prudney. She was very moving.
Anybody else?
Abby Ellen McKennie, my teacher right now.
Right now? Well, it's great to have those kind of mentors, isn't it? And those are wonderful teachers, I know, but so congratulations to you. This is for you.
Thank you.
So, congratulations. And who's here with you tonight? Are your parents here?
My grandparents.
Your grandparents are here? Well, let's have them up, because let's get them to take a picture with you, too. How about that, okay? Y'all come on up. Y'all are here supporting her, so we want y'all to come up with us. Thank y'all for being here. And there's Ms. Whitworth. Come on up here, Ms. Whitworth. She's somebody to be proud of. Congratulations. You do know her? We're good.
It's already done.
Come on in here.
Thank you.
Let's get one of your grandfathers.
We have with us tonight from the Highland School of Technology, Julia Morrow, Joe Buckner, Patience Foster, and Anna Ballard, who is a teacher and team advisor, and of course, Ms. McLean, the principal. And what you have before you is a kind of unique situation. These students participated in the moot court, and to do that, they went to Raleigh for the championship round and presented their arguments for the mock trial in front of the North Carolina Supreme Court. What is unique about this is the Highland School of Technology had the first and second place teams in the regionals, so it meant when we went for the state championship, we already knew we were bringing the hardware home. It was just which team would be the one to win. So Julia and Joseph were recognized as the first-place winners in the state, while Patience and Sarah Jane Hebner, who couldn't be with us this evening, earned second place. We also want to mention that Julia was recognized as the best arguer during the competition. So I want to congratulate them and ask Mr. Devene if he could recognize them.
Also, like, before I forget, Erin, is Erin Rock, Erin worked with him this year? Is that correct, Erin? And I want everybody to look at her, stand up for her. She did a really good job. Congratulations, Patience, right? All right. Julia, congratulations. And Joseph, and you go by Joe, right? Either one. First of all, congratulations. Moot Court, even though I'm an ex-athlete from a long time ago, as your grandparents or great-grandparents might remember, this is very, very important to me and to our school, to Highland. I almost said our school, sorry. I always thought this was a great thing, right? There was always great competition, and I'm tickled to death that your competition was the 18-team. So congratulations on behalf of the Board of Education. Very proud of you. And if any of our lawyers, knee lawyers, maybe we could look to you in the years. Congratulations.
While they're making their way up, I would like to remind everyone that Ms. McLean was named as the 2018-19 Principal of the Year. Well, members of the board, Highland is a blue-ribbon school. It's gotten a lot of attention, and what you just saw by the moot court championship talks about the academics. But we also have an athletic program at Highland. So tonight, we'd like to recognize Addison Bean. Addison is our new individual 1A golf state champion. So welcome. Mr. Devene, as a golfer, you can appreciate that on opening round, he shot a 77, but on day two, he shot a 73 to win the championship by one stroke.
I'm sure that you learned everything. Coach Hudson. And how are your grades?
They're good.
But we are so proud of you. And I don't care what kind of championship. Moot Court is just as important as golf, but all of them are good. So on behalf of the board, thank you so much, and congratulations to you. Very proud of you.
Marty, will you come on up and join him for the picture, please? Ms. McLean.
Thank you all for being with us tonight.
Ms. Burge, I coached him in ninth grade.
You are old, Lee.
I am old. Who said that?
All right, I need to know your driver and your buddy.
Spider.
Can you pitch your coach? I know.
Congratulations.
Marty, good job.
Really?
Thank you.
Yeah, y'all did a good job.
Y'all made a big job.
Also received his Eagle Scout.
Addison, Mr. Collier says he needs to give you another handshake, because as an Eagle Scout, there's a special way he's supposed to handshake.
It's a secret handshake.
Yes, it's an Eagle Scout handshake. I did not know that you were an Eagle Scout.
Well, there goes the secret.
Congratulations. Well, to conclude our good news, anybody recognize something big happened since this board last met? Starts with a two, as in $250 million bond referendum with a 69% approval rating was passed. And so we thought it was appropriate tonight to recognize two people who contributed greatly to the Our Children, Our Future Community Committee campaign. Who's the third one? Steve?
Steve.
Will?
Steve.
Steve. Okay. So, I don't know, the peanut gallery's got me here, but really, what's important is that this will allow the school system to continue to grow and to serve the needs of this community. The passage of 69% showed the community's commitment to what we have been talking about doing, and it will allow us to continue to meet the growing needs as well as to begin to address the documented needs of repairs in our school. And so that all is made possible because the citizens also approved a 1/4 cent sales tax with 52% of the vote. This is expected to generate over $6 million a year, which will allow for the funding of the $250 million. So tonight, we do want to recognize these three gentlemen, and so I'd ask them to come forward, please. Mr. Huff Studdler, I didn't have it in my notes that you were gonna be here. And then Erin was on the committee as well.
Can I go now?
Since we only have one plaque, you each get it for a quarter. This is just the main group of our children, our future committee, and very simply put, without them, the bond wouldn't have passed. It was their hard work, their vision, their tenacity, their being out in the public, and selling, 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 and that's exactly what they did. So we're eternally grateful and cannot wait to see the fruits of y'all's labor. So on behalf of the board, thank you, thank you, thank you. Erin, I'll let you hold it, and y'all can touch it. They won't. Come on. Yeah, you take picture of them first.
Okay.
Yeah, four horses. That's a good one.
Here, put your hand on it, too.
Hi, Sean. You're gonna have to tell us where it may.
Steve over a little bit. Ramsey, there you go.
Somebody in the room?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now you don't have to shake her hand. She's just around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait for my wife. She's the only one watching, that's enough.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Guthrie.
As we continue to look at those that had, that made a difference in the passing of our bond referendum, I would like to applaud our superintendent for the work that he did for the endless hours that he spent in meeting, greeting, and explaining how this money would be spent. So Superintendent Booker, we applaud you, and we want you to know that we greatly appreciate your efforts and your work.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. All right, the next item on our agenda is public expression. I need to read the rules before we start. Citizens wishing to make comment and who have completed a request to speak for them will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the mic for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The members of the board do not respond to public expression during public expression. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential subjects or personnel matters. The chair shall rule on all points of order during public expression. My first speaker that signed up is Mr. Edward Swayze.
First of all, I want to thank you. Is this, is this mic working?
It's ready.
Okay. I do want to thank everybody for your time. I hope the next time I talk to you guys, it's on a happier note. I've got some unhappy business to talk about tonight, but it means an awful lot to me and my family, and I know it, I know it means a lot to you guys, too. I'm just looking for a little bit of help here, so I'll try to stick to the three minutes here. I'm here to discuss a serious lack of protection from bullying in the school system that we've experienced as a family. My youngest son has faced bullying for years, over and over, in different scenarios, and we've always been let down by the personnel and by the policies of this school system. We've even been punished alongside the bullies because of non-common sense rules that are in place. And I'll explain the situation that happened at Forestview High School last Thursday and let you decide what you think about what went on. Each time we've taken the appropriate steps, we went to the superintendent's office, we've went to the school administration. It's never, we've always got a silly response, no, no help at all from the system. So last Thursday, or leading into last Thursday, my son has been hit in the stomach three to five times a week, a week, for the last couple of months by a certain student that's been picking on him. They singled him out in high, in PE class. He's trying to fit in. He didn't want to go tattle-tale on him, so he's just trying to avoid the bully. Well, it came to a head last Thursday in a bathroom where he ended up getting trapped by this bully. So with a, with a crowd to perform for, this bully started hitting him in the stomach over and over and over, looking for a response, and my youngest son didn't want to even show it. He's, guy's book bag on, getting hit hard in the stomach, doesn't want to show weakness, so doesn't give a response. Twelve times, so it takes a while. So finally, the bully's between him and the door, he can't get away, he's hit him 12 times, he hits him in the face. So with that, my son's like, fine, drops his bookbag, says, "Let's go." He knows it's not gonna work out good for him, and it didn't. The bully already was on him before he dropped his bookbag, hit him many more times in the torso, slammed him into a urinal, hurting his shoulder and his back. My son actually was able to throw a punch, but missed during this process. Even shoved him up against a wall, tried to throw a punch, and missed. And so with that, the bully started landing hard blows to the, to the face, busted his lip, a lot more shots to the body. At this time, the SRO finally appeared in the bathroom, so finally, somebody's here to save this situation. This is, this is a situation he's dreaded for months that's occurring right here. He, every time they've hit him, they've called him a fat little B-word.
Mr. Swayze, I'll extend, extend your time if you could wrap it up.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I'm gonna tie it up. So he's got such a complex, he wears a hoodie every day, even though it's hot now and it's not comfortable. He's, he's really being affected by this, but, so the SRO, when he came in, the school administration, SRO, said because he dropped his bookbag and attempted to swing back, that he was suspended five days with, I don't know if the bully was suspended or not, but he was suspended five days as if he wanted this to happen. So he's at home serving the suspension now, knowing that his school doesn't have his back, doesn't, thinks he did something wrong. And, and what I'd like to ask of you tonight is if we could just put a little bit more attention of putting the right people in place and pushing for the right SROs to be in the right place at the right time. We know when these bullying events occur, and also, when you've made a wrong call, like you know, looking back on this, that this, this is not, my son's not at fault here. He was put in a situation he couldn't get out of. When you know that, to admit that, and let's make it right. What the school is still doing today is telling me that they're, they followed policy. My son's gonna serve this full suspension. He's gonna return to school with, with, with no, with the message that I did something wrong. So I just, I want to bring that to you guys' attention tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity. Now, I'm apologizing for going over. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Andrew Lockridge.
Can, can you hear me from right here? Okay. Hello, my name is Drew Lockridge. I live at 603 Helm Drive in Lowell. Chairman Collier and the members of the school board, and Mr. Booker, good evening. And I want to thank you guys for letting me speak this evening. I want to talk to you guys about the Rally for Respect last Wednesday. May 16th was a day that I will not forget. Being surrounded by so many educators with the same purpose and the same passion was empowering. I am sure that many people had many different aspects of their job they had in mind as they headed to Raleigh, but I had one. It was my students. And I needed lawmakers to know several things. I wanted lawmakers to know that there were many teachers spending the little money that they earned trying to give their kids everything that they have, working out of textbooks that still state that Barack Obama is a senator, working with outdated technology, and our future deserves better than that. And I'll explain the situation that happened at Forestview High School last Thursday and let you decide what you think about what went on. Each time we've taken the appropriate steps, we went to the superintendent's office, we've went to the school administration. It's never, we've always got a silly response, no, no help at all from the system. So last Thursday, or leading into last Thursday, my son has been hit in the stomach three to five times a week, a week, for the last couple of months by a certain student that's been picking on him. They singled him out in high, in PE class. He's trying to fit in, he didn't want to go tattletale on them, so he's just trying to avoid the bully. Well, it came to a head last Thursday in a bathroom where he ended up getting trapped by this bully. So with a, with a crowd to perform for, this bully started hitting him in the stomach over and over and over, looking for a response, and my youngest son didn't want to even show it. He's, guy's book back on, getting hit hard in the stomach, doesn't want to show weakness, so doesn't give a response. Twelve times, so it takes a while. So finally, the bully's between him and the door, he can't get away, he's hit him twelve times, he hits him in the face. So with that, my son's like, fine, drops his bookbag, says, "Let's go." He knows it's not going to work out good for him, and it didn't. The bully already was on him before he dropped his bookbag, hit him many more times in the torso, slammed him into a urinal, hurting his shoulder and his back. My son actually was able to throw a punch, but missed during this process. Even shoved him up against a wall, tried to throw a punch, and missed. And so with that, the bully started landing hard blows to the, to the face, busted his lip, a lot more shots to the body. At this time, the SRO finally appeared in the bathroom, so finally somebody's here to save this situation. This is, this is a situation he's dreaded for months that's occurring right here. Every time they've hit him, they've called him a fat little B-word.
Mr. Swayze, I'll extend, extend your time if you could wrap it up.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I'm, I'm going to tie it up. So he's got such a complex, he wears a hoodie every day, even though it's hot now and it's not comfortable. He's, he's really being affected by this, but, so the SRO, when he came in, the school administration, SRO, said because he dropped his bookbag and attempted to swing back, that he was suspended five days with, I don't know if the bully was suspended or not, but he was suspended five days as if he wanted this to happen. So he's at home serving the suspension now, knowing that his school doesn't have his back, doesn't, thinks he did something wrong. And, and what I'd like to ask of you tonight is if we could just put a little bit more attention of putting the right people in place and pushing for the right SROs to be in the right place at the right time. We know when these bullying events occur, and also when you've made a wrong call, like you know, looking back on this, that this, this is not, my son's not at fault here. He was put in a situation he couldn't get out of. When you know that, to admit that, and let's make it right. What the school is still doing today is telling me that they're, they followed policy. My son's going to serve this full suspension. He's going to return to school with, with, with no, with the message that I did something wrong. So I just, I want to bring that to you guys' attention tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity. Now, I'm apologizing for going over, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Andrew Lockridge.
Can, can you hear me from right here? Okay. Hello, my name is Drew Lockridge, I live at 603 Helm's Drive in Lowell. Chairman Collier and the members of the school board, and Mr. Booker, good evening. And I want to thank you guys for letting me speak this evening. I want to talk to you guys about the rally for respect last Wednesday. May 16th was a day that I will not forget. Being surrounded by so many educators with the same purpose and the same passion was empowering. I am sure that many people had many different aspects of their job they had in mind as they headed to Raleigh, but I had one, it was my students. And I needed lawmakers to know several things. I wanted lawmakers to know that there were many teachers spending the little money that they earned trying to give their kids everything that they have. Working out of textbooks that still state that Barack Obama is a senator. Working with outdated technology, and our future deserves better than that. I wanted lawmakers to know that I live paycheck to paycheck. I have multiple jobs to make ends meet. They say, "Well, you know what you were getting into." But as a seventeen-year-old preparing for college, teaching fellows was my way to pay for school. I was fortunate enough to be one of the last recipients of the Teaching Fellows Scholarship Program. This was a program that provided so much opportunity for students and public school systems with outstanding teachers to, that are eager to enter the classroom. Now that I'm in the profession, would I change my mind and my path? Never. I cannot imagine myself doing anything else. But we need pay to reflect workload. I need my veteran colleagues that have mentored me and taught me more than I could ever repay to receive payment for their time and their service to our kids. I wanted lawmakers to know that I love my job. I have always been told when you love your work, you never work a day in your life. And I was lucky enough to find that job very early. I get the opportunity to work with awesome kids every day. I wanted lawmakers to know that I will stand up for these kids and give them a voice. I wanted lawmakers to know that this next couple of weeks of testing is going to be grueling for my kids. That taking a test that is geared to trick them and make them second guess themselves, many kids equate their school experience to a number they get on an EOG. They feel like if they do not get that three or four, that they're letting somebody down. My students are more than a number on a test. I have been very blessed in my short career in a wonderful school, in a wonderful district, with amazing staff. I have received great support from Gaston County Schools. I work in a brand-new building with state-of-the-art technology, but I also know that that is not the case for most people in this state. Thank you Gaston County Schools for giving me and my fellow educators the opportunity to be there and to be heard. Thank you for supporting me as an educator and for helping me help my students succeed for their goals. Thank you.
The next speaker is Julian Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Collier, Mr. Booker, I want to speak just a moment about the rally on last Wednesday.
Mr. Wilson, before we start, if you can give us your address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2929 Davis Park Road, Gastonia. A few years ago, I was honored to represent Gaston County Schools as the Teacher of the Year. And then I was just flabbergasted that I ended up becoming the, the district Teacher of the Year and represented us to the state. And among talking to some of my Teachers of the Year from across the state, and, and some teachers who had been Teacher of the Year for the entire state over several years, and meeting so many wonderful educators, I had a conversation with a, with a, an educator. She was a former Teacher of the Year, and she was talking about only having one suit to wear when she spoke as Teacher of the Year for the state of North Carolina. She was visiting Chapel Hill and, and talking to students and encouraging them to go into education. She was going to North Carolina State and encouraging students to go into education. She was going out to Pembroke, and she had one suit to wear. She and her husband were struggling, and she was the face of public education for the state of North Carolina. Maya Angelou's poet once said, she said, "When, when you know better, you do better." And one of the things that I really, I will cherish from last Wednesday is that I think many of us in our state are beginning to wake up and understand, we can do better. We truly can. I, I was thankful for the time, thank you for, for allowing us the opportunity. It was, it was immeasurable to see not just the amount of educators, we call it an education or educators rally or what have you, but to see the amount of students who are, who are excited about having the opportunity to fight for better conditions in their classrooms and in their schools. To see the parents out, out on, on the sidewalks and walking with the crowd and, and wearing T-shirts saying that we support public education. We want to remain the best choice. We know that in the, the environment we're, we're in, that there, there are more charter schools, there are more private schools, and as public school educators and in the public school arena, we want to be and remain the best choice. And the way to do that is to, is to increase funding for our classrooms and for our students, and to, to pay teachers a decent, a decent salary so that they won't be visiting colleges and encouraging folks to go into education with one suit. I thank you so much for your time this evening, and I will turn over the rest of my time. Thank you.
Next speaker, Diane Gibson.
Diane Gibson, 908 South South Street, Gastonia 28052. Chairman Collier, esteemed members of the school board, and Mr. Booker, good evening. I am Diane Gibson, President of the Gaston County Unit of North Carolina Association of Educators, otherwise known as NCAE, and a teacher at North Gaston High School. NCAE's core values continue to drive what we do here in Gaston County as well as across North Carolina. We work to empower our members as leaders in their schools as well as in their classrooms. We remain a powerful voice for our students, for public schools, and educators, and this was never more evident than on May 16th, as hundreds of Gaston County educators descended on Raleigh to advocate for their students, for public education, and their profession. My purpose in speaking with you tonight is threefold. First, on behalf of our members and other educators, I would like to express our appreciation for Gaston County Schools in making May 16th an optional teacher work day. I know this was an inconvenience to the families we serve. However, the fight for fully funding public schools has to occur. North Carolina's per pupil spending is below the national average by approximately 2,500. Imagine the difference we can make with our students if we had the money available. Secondly, many of our educators have been portrayed to be selfish and only concerned about their salary. And while it is true that our pay is below the average, the majority of the folks marching on May 16th were there for a host of other concerns as well. From the need for more counselors, nurses, and social workers, to the need for less testing and more supplies such as up-to-date textbooks and safe and secure schools. These educators were willing to pay for a personal day, drive three and a half hours one-way, march in the rain, and return to the classroom the next day. It's personal for us. Lastly, we know this is only the beginning. We are willing to fight for our priorities and to hold our legislators accountable for per pupil spending to the national average within four years. Professional compensation and benefit plan for all educators, including reinstating master pay, restoring longevity pay, ending pay for performance based on test scores, and of course, our annual cost of living expenses. We also want to invest in the health and well-being of our students and making our schools safe. And fixing our crumbling schools in large class sizes with a statewide school construction bond. And lastly, no corporate tax cuts until per pupil spending and teacher pay raises at national level. I ask that you join us in our continued fight to get public education the funding and the support it needs. NCA will always advocate for quality public education for every child. Thank you.
The next speaker, Elizabeth Haywood.
Good evening, I am Elizabeth Haywood, 4024 Hareford Lane, Dallas, North Carolina, and I am also here to speak on behalf of the rally. I just want to thank you guys for, for allowing us as educators to have that time to, to share our passion. I will tell you, I am one of four educators, or five of us, from Costner Elementary that attended the rally, and we were actually able to go and meet with our representative, Kelly Hastings. It was invaluable for him to be able to hear from us as educators what is passionate about education for us. For me, it was more about the funding of public education. Every day, I go into my classroom and I see twenty-six smiling faces. I, I see that they expect me to come and bring the best to them. And so I wanted Representative Hastings to know that I expect them, as the governing board of the state, to provide funding to be able to fund the best for my students. I wanted him to see my passion. Not only do I have twenty-six students that depend on me, I have three daughters. Two are currently at Costner Elementary, and one will be a public school student. I'm a product of Gaston County Schools, I am proud of Gaston County Schools. I wanted him to see the passion that I have for public education, because just like the other educators said, public education, it's our best choice for all students. All students deserve to have that type of learning, and it needs to be fully funded. I do again, thank you for, for the time and for giving us that opportunity because it was an invaluable experience. Being able to be with fellow educators was just so empowering to see that public education is moving in the right way, and that the lawmakers, they are watching, they are seeing that public education needs to be at the forefront. So again, I appreciate your time and thank you so much.
Ms. Luato, we've got all, everybody signed up. Okay, and that concludes our public expression. The next agenda item is approval and correction of the minutes for the March 5th, 2018 meeting and the March 19th, 2018 meeting. I'll need a motion. Motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Dedman. No comments. All in favor, show by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. The next agenda item is a classroom moment, this is for information, Dr. Balknight.
Good evening Chairman Collier, Superintendent Booker, and members of the board. I'm happy to ask Dr. Bostick to come up. She's going to introduce our school, the principals here, and also other staff members to talk about the calming room that they have. So if Ms. Bostick will come up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Superintendent, and members of the board. For tonight's classroom moment, I have the privilege of introducing Ms. Caroline Black, who is the principal at Bessemer City Central, and her teacher assistant, Ms. Rita Kennedy. Ms. Black recognized that there was a need at her school to better support her students both behaviorally and emotionally and well-being, as well as to find alternative methods for addressing disruptive behaviors, avoiding suspension, and losing precious instructional time. Ms. Black has gone above and beyond to implement positive behavior interventions and supports at her school, including creating a common, calming room, which you will see through her presentation, has benefited, benefited her school in a variety of ways.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to share one of the many great things going on at Bessemer City Central. At BCC, we believe that students that need the most love often show you in the most unloving ways. So because of that, we developed the calming room, and I'd like to begin by sharing the data and sharing the success that we've experienced this year as we implemented it. So last year, we had a total of 752 office referrals. Three hundred and forty-six of those were classroom disruptions, and that was 346 times that our teachers had to stop teaching to deal with a disruptive behavior. I'm proud to say that this year, we've decreased that to 302 office referrals, 109 classroom disruptions. We've decreased our out-of-school suspensions to 35, and in-school suspension to 47. It is, I become emotional when I think about the fact that our discipline has decreased by over 50% because with this decrease in discipline, we have an increase in academic growth, and it has been amazing to see that in such a short amount of time. Our calming classroom, when our students are having some type of emotional outbursts, disturbance, or having a rough day because of their environmental factors that are out of their control, the calming room teaches them coping skills. They go into the calming room, and there is a beautiful blue color, thanks to our Gaston County facilities. It's a very calming color. No fluorescent lights, we use natural sunlight, we use lamps. They come in, and the students can choose up to three out of five research-based stations that are based on the research able to calm our students down quickly. So they can choose between a musical station where we play classical music, journaling where it remains confidential to the student, kinesthetic where we have stationary pedals, stability balls and rebound trampolines, tactile stations where they can work puzzles, spatial where they have a privacy tent where they can go with stuffed animals and blankets. Each station, they stay for approximately five minutes. So in ten to fifteen minutes, they are assessed by our amazing teacher assistant, Ms. Rita Kennedy, who facilitates our calming room. And I'm proud to say that it has had a hundred percent success rate. So every student this year that has visited the calming room has been able to return to class and have a great rest of the day. So we've not had to send them home, we've not had to suspend them. Because this, because the visit to the calming room means so much to our students to keep that private and confidential, we didn't bring a student with us, but I would like for Rita Kennedy to speak just a couple of minutes on behalf of our students.
Good afternoon, it's a great pleasure to be here today, and I was so thankful that Ms. Black considered me on behalf of the calming room to help represent and to assist the students. Once they enter the calming room, we try to be as positive as we most can in our behavior room. It is a positive environment, and I'm sorry, I'm nervous right now, and I don't know why. Mr. Booker had, can contest that I am a lot more calm in the calming room, but you guys have, have me all riled up. But in the calming room, it is a great experience. I am so thrilled each morning to get up and to assist the students, not only inside the calming room, but Ms. Black encourages that I go out inside the classrooms and also eat with them in lunch, and I do a lot of hall monitoring when I don't have students in the calming room, and it does work. And we really let the kids know when they enter the calming room, that you may have chose a bad moment, but we're going to find you a positive solution, we're going to work with you, and we encourage them with our positive solutions to enter back into the classroom with better techniques on how to handle the class situation regardless of what it is. We really look forward to the kids coming in, not even just on the bad behavior moments, but just kids stopping past and they noticing things might be getting ready to go on with them. They'll come in and we'll also help redirect that behavior, too. Thank you all.
At our last benchmarks, we discovered that currently we have the third highest growth in the county, and I, I definitely contribute that to this calming room because our students are able to learn more, they're in our classes more, they're happier there, and they've learned coping skills to not only use within the calming room, but within their own classrooms and within their home environment as well. So we're very proud of our students and the accomplishments that they've made. Thank you for this time.
Questions or comments from the board?
I have.
Ms. Roberts, and then Ms. Guthrie.
First of all, I'm really excited to hear about this room because there are so many things that our students go through before they ever step foot in any of our buildings, things that they don't even know how to speak about. Just curious, out of the five therapies, is there one that seems to be used more than others?
Absolutely. Our most popular station is the kinesthetic station, particularly the stationary pedals because it gets that negative energy out, and that's usually their first go-to.
Ms. Guthrie.
Well, I am just thrilled to hear what you're doing there in order to meet the needs of our children. I like the idea of decreasing the out-of-school suspension. I think that's just phenomenal to keep our children in school and to provide the means for them to resolve whatever conflicts they may have and return to the classroom where learning is taking, actually taking place. And as we look at the, the role of the classroom teacher, and certainly our teachers here in Gaston County, we know that it's important for you to collaborate with the classroom teachers in order to perhaps find out what caused the behavior in the first place in the classroom so that, working together to find a solution. I like that. We applaud both you and, there's no reason to be nervous, I guess, to be, if you're going to be upset, do it here, and remain calm in the calming room. But we applaud you for your efforts because we know that children have a very strong keen of sense, and they can sense when you really want them to do well in a situation. So we just support that, and definitely, you're trying new things, you're stepping out of the box to meet the needs of the children, to provide them to meet the needs of the children, to provide them, as we heard some of the educators say earlier, you're trying to give them best choices and we appreciate that. We don't know all that you do in these 55 schools, but we greatly appreciate what you are doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Cherry?
Are you the only adult in the classroom, in that room?
Yes, ma'am.
God bless you. That's phenomenal. What's the most, what's the most number that you've had at one time?
Up to about two or three.
Okay, that's great. Ms. Black, has any other school asked you to come in and observe?
Yes, ma'am. I've had quite a few visits. Even some educators outside of our district who have heard of the calming room have come to visit because it's called on as a successful alternative to suspension. So our doors are always open and we're always happy. And I will be sharing at the Teaching and Learning Conference so that other administrators can hear the success of it as well.
That's wonderful.
And Ms. Cherry, she won't share that she went to a regional presentation and her first session was oversubscribed and so popular she was asked to do two additional sessions at the regional that she was at.
Dr. Bocknight, is this the library? Is this the school where the changes are taking place in the library? I mean, I'm hearing so many things. Gee whiz. What's the library? How did you change that now?
It will be the Innovation Station instead of the Media Center. So we're going to have project-based learning out of our Media Center where students will rotate through there once a week to be able to have more hands-on activities in addition to reading.
You need to present.
Ms. Guthrie, members of the board, you'll recall that you authorized us to have six restart schools. And this is one of our restart schools. So she has given more latitude in what she can do in operating her school and she's taken advantage of that with these programs. And part of the restart initiative, we're part of the Innovation Project, and she's been a part of presenting to that group because she learned through the Innovation Network. A school was doing this north of Mecklenburg in Cabarrus. And she's taken that and enhanced it. So that's part of what you all allowed us to do by giving us the restart authority.
Mr. Dedman?
First of all, I think this is a wonderful thing that you're doing. I think it's great. And don't be nervous. I'm just curious, did you have any difficulty? Because I have been a classroom teacher and it's been a long time ago. But sometimes that's such a difficult job that it's hard when that student leaves that classroom. Did they go right back or is there a time limit? And how did you get your teachers to buy into that concept?
We did, before the school started, we did professional development sessions where we had Chris Mills come in and talk with them about the importance of not just punishing a behavior, changing the behavior. And what our teachers have seen is through these coping skills, the behaviors are changing. So in the long run, it's less that they're having those disruptions. And so actually, some of my teachers have even purchased their own tents and their own materials to create those rotations within their own classroom because they've seen how successful it is. So it's been very inviting for the teachers.
We're really excited to see this and thank you for being here tonight to present this. You did great. Couldn't tell that you were nervous, Ms. Kennedy. But thank you all for being here tonight. Yes, yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is the School Nutrition 18-19 Procurement Plan. This is an action item. And Mr. Hoskins, are you going to present, Mr. Fields?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. I'd like to introduce Mr. Frank Fields, who needs no introduction. He's been here how many years?
Few times.
A few times. As you know, this will be his swan song. He will be retiring soon. So with a heavy heart, I will turn it over to Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Thank you, Chairman Collier, members of the board, Mr. Booker. As a part of our annual renewal of the agreement to administer a school nutrition program, we are required to do a formal procurement plan and submit that to the state of North Carolina for their record and also their approval. I believe the document has been distributed to the board prior to the meeting. It is based on a template that was provided by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And what it does is it ensures that we are compliant with state, federal and local purchasing requirements that keeps us finding free and open procurement and competition for our supplies and also our foods and services. And then also it does keep us compliant with federal regulations moving forward. So it's a fairly lengthy document, but it is exhaustive and covers every category from emergency purchases to formal procurement and informal procurement for smaller purchases. So with the board's consideration, it is an action item. And if you have questions, we'll be happy to take those.
This item, as he said, will need a motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Guthrie, second by Mr. Dedman. Questions or comments?
I do have one comment.
Mr. Dedman?
The banquet that Mr. Fields put on was just wonderful. And if you ever want to go hear Frank Sinatra sing.
Well, thank you. I may have a future as a lounge singer.
Mr. Fields, while we have you here, would you talk about part of the procurement process? I know that over the last several years, you have joined in on a statewide procurement, particularly worked, I know, with CMS. Would you just expand so they understand the depth you've gone to to make sure we're following?
Yeah, one of the unique things about the state of North Carolina is they created a procurement alliance that's managed by a couple of personnel funded by the Department of Public Instruction. And what that allows us to do is to have purchasing power that really encompasses about 100 of the school systems in the state of North Carolina now. There have been a few who have yet to join. And that's more because of just some local influences. I know there's a couple of smaller co-ops. But this alliance now, what it does is solicits pricing on, I would say, probably 1,000 items. Anything you could imagine that you would need in a school nutrition department and gets statewide pricing, at which time then you go to a distributor who provides a fee-for-service for providing those items. So we get massive purchasing power because of that. It's been so successful, in fact, that the South Carolina Procurement Alliance has requested the permission to join our North Carolina Alliance. It gives us great pricing. It gives us great products. It takes away some of the administrative burden that comes with bidding in terms of advertising, in terms of actually submitting the bids to the manufacturers and the distributors. And it gives us more flexibility to look at new products. So we think it's been a tremendous opportunity for us. It actually came, became something that was attractive to us about three years ago when we found that we could find it to work our model of self-distribution and we could get some benefits from that. So we're very pleased to be a part of that. We still do separate bids, which we are receiving now for some other services like milk and bread and ice cream and things of that nature. But this is the bulk of our food bid, the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, which we have extended for a second year and there's provisions for even a third year following this coming year. Yes, sir.
Seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor, show by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Mr. Fields, before you go, sometimes I just have to tell a story. Thanks to your leadership, I remember a day, and I know the board gets tired of hearing me talk about the days I've been on this board. But I remember when school nutrition was in the hole over a million dollars. And you came in and were part of the leadership that helped turn that around, put, anybody who watched this bar rescue, he put in POS systems and did a lot of things that got that, our school nutrition turned around very quickly. And we are going to miss your leadership and you have some big shoes that we're going to have a hard time feeling.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. And I assure you that the credit goes to my staff and they're still there and we're in good shape. So I appreciate the confidence of the board and thank you for all of your support through the years.
Okay, Ms. Guthrie?
And Mr. Fields, I'd like to say that I know that you dedicate yourself or your staff during the summer to meet the needs of children in Gaston County. And certainly that is greatly appreciated. I know personally that you worked with the community that our church is in to make certain that the children were fed. And you worked around the schedule that we set forth. So we appreciate what you did, how you modified your time in order to meet the needs of our children here. That's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. The next item on our agenda is the Strategic Plan Update. Ms. Mattson?
As the two of them make their way, what we intend to do is just prepare you. We are in year four as we're concluding this school year and it's a five-year strategic plan. And so we'll start with that and it coincides with Advanced Ed and that completion. So it's just a cycle. So we want to start talking about this because a lot of work will go in this summer with school improvement plans. It'll be their first year, their new two-year plans. So it all dovetails together. So that's what tonight's intent is for. So thank you, Ms. Mattson.
Good evening Chairman Collier, Vice Chairman Ramsey, Board of Education members and Superintendent Booker. Rebecca Powers from our Accountability Department and I are very pleased to talk with you tonight about the Strategic Plan. As you know, our current plan is effective from the 2014 school year through the end of the 2019 school year. It's time for us to begin thinking about our new plan. We'll begin that process as school opens this school year. When we looked through what we did before, we got stakeholder input. We developed four guiding principles. We developed a vision, a mission and our beliefs. And we have measures in our scorecard. The conversation began at the Board of Education Retreat in January of 2014, where we talked about what a vision and mission are. Then we talked about some key words that we thought were very important for the development of this district. From there, the conversation really began with all of our various stakeholders. Just as Mr. Booker was becoming superintendent, we went out and had 14 different community meetings at seven school locations. We reached out to faith-based partners. And through this process, we had over 1,200 attendees and over 1,600 comments to help us develop our strategic plan. We also utilized people in our schools. So we met with various groups such as principals, assistant principals, all of our various organizations. When we went through our plan and Mr. Booker was rolling this out, the very first thing he talked about is the four Cs. He talked about commitment. He talked about communication, community and choice. And this has been a common theme for the past four years from our leaders in the district and Mr. Booker. We then developed our vision and our mission. Then we had to decide what our beliefs were. And that is diversity, innovation, collaboration, excellence and safety. And you see the triangle in the middle. These are our goals for our district. The foundation of everything we do in the district is our effective employees. Without that, we cannot be successful. You will also see individualized instruction. And on the left-hand side, you see college or career ready. And you felt it was very important to have that or in there. And that is something that you'll see in your next presentation. We want technology integration, so we shouldn't have Technology Tuesdays. It should be naturally integrated into the curriculum. And we want safety in our schools. Then we met with our administrative team in the schools and we said, how are we going to achieve this? What should our focus areas be? And we had various meetings with our principals and our assistant principals and our teachers. And we said, how are we going to reach these goals? They said, the most important thing to us is that we have safe schools. Because without safe schools, we can't teach our children. Of course, they have to have highly effective instruction, great customer service, effective integration of technology and facilities we can be proud of. Even if a school is old, it can still be clean and we can be proud of that facility. So, once we developed our plan, we put it up on our website. And you can go to our website and see everything about our vision, mission and our goals, as well as our report card on our strategic plan. At this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Rebecca Powers so she can discuss some of the measures for the strategic plan.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to take you through our five priorities and our measurements that we use to gauge our success throughout our strategic plan. The first one I'd like to begin with is our academics. Within our academics focus area, we focus on our proficiency and growth, literacy in our K3, school choice, career and technical education and our professional development opportunities. When we began writing our strategic plan in 2013-14, our graduation rate was at 83.5%. In 2016-17, we are proud to announce that our graduation rate was 88.3%. This is a 4.8 point increase over our four years. For our school performance, 84% of our schools have either met or exceeded the growth expectations. While 77.5% of our schools received a rating of A, B or C in their school performance grade. When we began our strategic plan, we had two school choice options with Holland School of Technology and Gaston Early College. At this time, we have five. We introduced Hawksness Steam Academy, Pleasant Ridge AIG Academy and also our Virtual Academy. And in the 2018-19 school year, we will roll out our sixth school option with Stanley Steam Academy. Currently, on all of our Grade 3 through 8 EOGs, that's reading, science and mathematics, we are at 55% proficient. Our goal is 72. For our CTE measurement, out of 154 reporting districts, charter schools and private schools, our district ranked fourth in student earned certifications. For our Effective Employees Measurements, our current supplement is 2,651. This is a steady increase for three years in a row from $2,177. As of last week, we have given out 34 new early contracts for teachers for the 18-19 school year. When we began our strategic plan, we had 90 National Board Certified Educators in Gaston County Schools. We currently have 219 from the 16-17 school year. And last, our Teaching and Learning Conference that is held in August of each school year, last year we saw our highest attendance with over 1,000 educators coming to Gaston County. We combine our technology and our customer service and communications measurements together in our strategic plan. For technology, we look at our technology in the classroom, our Wi-Fi capabilities in all of our schools, that we are a Google District, our technology upgrades that we are having and our robust network. In our customer service and communication, we look at our customer service attitude. We have a parent-community liaison, communication efforts that we have, website and social media and our mobile app. We also have Mr. Hagens, who is the president of the North Carolina Public School Relations Association. So he makes sure we're always on top of our communication efforts.
Currently, for every 1.33 students, we have one mobile device. We also have 88% of our parents and students over this school year have accessed our Power School Parent Portal, whether through a desktop, laptop, or our mobile app. We have had over 6,700,000 visits to our Gaston County Schools homepage, and we have had over 16,000 downloads to our Gaston County Schools mobile app. For our community involvement measurement, we want to see that we're continuing that conversation with our all stakeholders. We look at our community outreach opportunities, our business and community partnerships, our mentors and volunteers, and our special events and programs. Currently, we have 3,770 volunteers in Gaston County Schools. We also have 287 mentors working with our students each and every day. We also have 432 business and faith-based partnerships, as well as individuals working with our schools to make us better. This is an increase from the beginning of our strategic plan where we had 407. And also, we have our CTE Advisory Board, which has been a vital asset to us in our continued growth in our CTE program. For facilities and school safety, we measure our capital needs, our new school construction, school resource officers, our partnerships with law enforcement, and our security upgrades and safety audits. When we began our strategic plan, we had an anti-bullying campaign of Rachel's Challenge that we had rolled out to all of our schools. In order to keep our anti-bullying message fresh and in the forefront of our schools and our students' minds, we have rolled out our new stand-up Gaston anti-bullying campaign this school year. We currently have a full-time SRO in every middle and high school, along with a part-time SRO in all of our elementary schools. But as you know, we received funding from our county commissioners to be able to implement full-time SROs in the near future in all of our schools. As always, safety remains number one in our school systems, which is evident with our continued, or our controlled access systems at each one of our sites. So what's ahead for Gaston County Schools in our strategic plan? As Mr. Booker stated, we just finished up our five-year cycle of advanced ed accreditation in February. We take that feedback, and we begin looking at our new five-year cycle of our strategic plan. We begin with our school improvement plans that are up for their two-year cycle. All school improvement plans have to map back to our strategic plan with their goals. We will then begin looking at our new strategic plan for the 2019-20 school years when it will begin, and by doing so, we use that advanced ed information, our school improvement plans, and we continue the conversation with our Board of Education, our community meetings, and then our departmental meetings and advisory meetings. All of this will take place after the beginning of our 18-19 school year. And as always, our strategic plan goes back to our vision of Gaston County Schools, which is to inspire success and a lifetime of learning. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And as Mr. Booker said, this is the fourth year of our five-year plan. So next year, we'll be looking to start all over again as we develop another five-year plan. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. The next item is Career and Technical Education Update. Dr. Balknight. And Mr. Montgomery, is he here? He is always a part of this. I want to make sure that everybody realizes Mr. Montgomery's work in this area, and Ms. Buchanan, I mean, I know Ms. Balknight, you're going to turn it over to Mr. Buchanan, who has some exciting information for us. But I will make sure the board's aware of Mr. Montgomery's work in this area, too.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Collier, and Board members, and Superintendent Booker. Mr. Montgomery supervises Mr. Buchanan, and as Mr. Hoskins said earlier, I don't think Mr. Buchanan needs any introduction. I think the board's very familiar with all the work that he's done, as Ms. Powers acknowledged as well, in the strategic planning, how critical and important career and technical education is to this county. So again, Mr. Buchanan.
Good afternoon, members of the Gaston County Board of Education, Chairman Collier, Vice Chairman Ramsey, and Superintendent Booker. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. As Dr. Balknight said, I'm Brett Buchanan, the Career and Technical Education Director for Gaston County Schools. Prodigous, remarkably or impressively great in extent, size, or degree. Why is that slide here? Well, about this time last year, when I presented our annual Local Planning System Grant, I told you we had an awesome year in CTE, and honestly, I tried to figure out, could we even top what we had done that year? Once constructing this presentation, I quickly realized that we had truly outdone everything we did that year. So I had to come up with a word that was better than awesome. My word bag is not that deep, so I did what any other red-blooded American would do. I Googled words better than awesome. And prodigious stood out to me. It felt like, you know, it was a really fairly rare but prestigious sounding word, so we would use that for today. Hopefully, when we're done with this presentation, you will think back to prodigious and think that was the perfect choice for what we have done in CTE this year. Each year, CTE in any county in North Carolina must present a Local Planning System Grant to obtain the federal and state dollars needed to fund anything and everything CTE. 90% of the total funds we receive, which will be a tad over $10 million, goes to staffing, support staff, and our teachers, with the rest going towards consumables and other items needed for technology, et cetera. In these pictures below, these are taken from inside of our CTE programs. To the left at Ashbrook, our Electrical Trades Program, the teacher there, Brandon Wright, in the middle, at Cramerton Middle, our TechEd program with Ms. Amy Schwartz as the teacher, and that's incorporating our CTE robotics, which is offered at every middle school in the county. And then to the right at Bessemer City High School, Ms. Susan Carpenter's class, that's our Health Sciences Nursing Fundamentals class. So let's go over some facts, figures about CTE for the 17-18 school year, and a lot of this will tie directly into the strategic plan we just heard about. So high school students this year increased about 400 students enrolled in the high schools, a 5% annual increase on top of the 5% annual increase we had last year also. Middle school enrollment stayed relatively flat at 6,300 students total enrolling in CTE in our 22 schools, 10 high, 11 middle, and one alternative, a little over 17,000 total students. So the greatest amount ever we have had so far, you're going to hear me say that a lot, which is a positive, so I keep a lookout on those greatest amounts ever. CTE staff, 147 total CTE staff needed to educate all of these students to the top level, you're going to hear me describe. CTE courses offered, another one of those strategic plan items, 114 in-house course offerings. We hear about school choice, et cetera. CTE is always the forefront of that. On top of that, I think it's Strategic Plan 2.3, offering more CCP opportunities. Total offerings on top of the in-house 114, 170 total CTE course offerings, with the majority being CCP, along with NCVPS. That 170 is also a new maximum that we've ever offered. DPI course clusters, all of our CTE course offerings are grouped into what's called a course cluster. There are 16 total, but DPI only provides curriculum for 14 of those. We offer every single one of those. There's going to be a new offering next year, which you'll hear me talk about in a future slide, that we will be part of the pilot for that. NTHS inductees, National Technical Honor Society, the top-tier, top-level performers in CTE. We had 11% increase in just one year on the National Technical Honor Society. So if you look at the first metric, 10,900, we're increasing the volume of students enrolling into CTE. On top of, our top-level performers are increasing. So we're getting both of the things you look for, not just one or the other. And to put that in perspective, in 13-14 till this year, there's a 45% increase in our top-level performers. So definitely very proud of that. And the thing that could really, I could stop after saying this one number right here, is our CTE concentrator graduation rate is at 100%. So a concentrator is a student that's taken a four-course sequence in CTE courses, one of those being a second-level course. The past four years, it's been 97, 97, 99, and 100%. Can't go any higher. Just got to figure out how to stay there. But keep in mind that that also helps the overall graduation rate of Gaston County Schools at an 88.3. We're talking about over 1,000 students are CTE concentrators. We have over 2,300 total graduates. So when you talk about 100% concentrator graduation rate, almost half of that 88.3 are those. You can definitely see the benefit of getting students interested in CTE and how it would pay off. Also, keep in mind, just to put that out there, how great we are. The state graduation rate was 86.5. Both of our metrics beat that. So I'd like to say we're setting the pace, and hopefully people look at us and how they can attain that level. This is an intimidating slide with a lot of facts and figures, but at the same time, there is no way to separate it and get the full point across. As you just heard Ms. Powers acknowledge, 154 total entities in North Carolina receive CTE funding based on ADM, or Average Daily Membership. So to receive those funds, it's dispersed to anyone and everyone that receives funding from those. So that includes 100 counties with 115 school districts out of 154 total reporting entities, which includes your NCVPS schools. So this chart, this is all from DPI. There's nothing generated from the CTE office. The information is sent to us. If I put the whole sheet, it would go 154 entities long. We're just going to focus on Infinity Group One, which are the school systems that are relative to our size. So the top 10 largest districts in the state of North Carolina, we are the 10th ranked as far as size, around 32,000 students. So from top to bottom, from Wake to Gaston, we're the 10th largest district in North Carolina, going to credentials earned. One of the things we're most proud of in the past three years, it's went from seventh to sixth to fourth. 4,285 student-earned certifications. These are certifications that outside of CTE in a public school, an adult would have to pay for, maybe go to Gaston College for. Not only do we offer that, but we also pay for that for CTE with CTE funding to provide our students. So keep in mind here, this is really just a numbers game or a volume game. We should not be able to contend with districts that are literally triple our size and still have more student-earned certifications. So just to go through this to see how powerful it is, we're the 10th largest, 32,000 students, and this is just students earning a certification. Our students, on behalf of our teachers and our support staff, earn 4,285 credentials, out earning Cabarrus, Durham, Johnston, Forsyth, Guilford, and Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, which is three times our size. So we're doing some awesome things. Realize credentials are not mandatory. The mandatory things are covering the curriculum. This is above and beyond. So when you look at that, and I'm going to talk about in the very last column here, just how great our teachers are and support staff are, but when you're going above and beyond, outpacing people that you should not be able to because of the sheer amount of students they have and still earning more. We're doing great things inside Gaston County Schools CTE. So that's our certifications we're earning. What if you said, Brett, I need a number for proficiency for CTE. Anything and everything that we could apply a number to, that's what this proficiency score column is all about. So when you take our over 10,000 tested students and credentials earned, and you put a proficiency number from 0 to 100% to that, we had an 81.5. We just missed third place in those top 10 districts by two tenths of a point. On top of that, going to the next column, Technical Attainment Annual Increase, we had a 4.1% annual increase in one year, only bested by Durham County Schools, but at the same time, they're coming from a 56 to a 63, not discounting them, but the higher you go, the harder it gets to make those large gains. So we're very proud of that. Again, goes back to our support staff and our teachers. I'm just a person that gets to brag about it, and I'm definitely proud to brag about what they have done out there in our schools and classrooms. And on top of that, why this whole PowerPoint presentation, excuse me, this whole spreadsheet needed to be here, the percentage of CTE students who earn certifications. When our students walk in the classroom, if they are offered a credential, what to have a percentage of how many actually earn something. This is why we can do so great, even though we should be at the bottom of the list based on the volume of students we have inside of our schools. 68.7% of our students earn a certification in a classroom where it was offered. Number two on here is 50, almost 20 percentage points behind us. That's why you can say, let's look at Charlotte Meck, 9.5% earnings ratio, still at three times our size. Our teachers are going above and beyond the mandatory requirements. They do not have to do this, but they're proud to do that, and they realize the key to successful student outside of the four walls upon graduation is to have this extra value add that makes them important whenever they're stepping in front of our employers. On top of that, our teachers that go above and beyond get rewarded for that from DPI. $68,300 went in additional bonus just to CTE teachers for these credentials their students earn. 43 teachers total. Very powerful slide. Should be able to end there, but there's still more. Remember, I said prodigious. And this really goes to what, how great our teachers are. This is the top 10 districts listed from top to bottom, the left column, on the performance proficiency number they scored. 86 being the highest, 63 being the lowest of these top 10 largest districts in Infinity Group One. Pay attention to the red line. That's the focus. If you're above the red line, your proficiency rating in CTE was 80% or higher. If it was lower than, below the red line, it was a below 80% proficiency. If you look to the far right, that's the free and reduced lunch percentage numbers. Most of the time, no matter where the county is, or in the state, United States, you can typically look at free and reduced lunch numbers and get a good idea of how proficiency or how proficient students will perform. And it's not saying anything bad, it's just saying, whenever you get any lower free and reduced lunch number, excuse me, higher free and reduced lunch number percentages, usually the focus in the household is survival, and then other things come after that. The only thing that can counteract that or really combat that is awesome teachers and support staff. Nothing about this slide, except until I reveal the black boxes out of the ordinary. The lower the free and reduced lunch, the higher the proficiency. The higher in the free and reduced lunch, the lower the proficiency, unless you're Gaston County Schools. You have the highest free and reduced lunch proficiency and have the fourth highest proficiency rating out of those top 10 largest districts, and only missing third by two tenths of a point. That just takes awesome teachers and support staff going above and beyond, going back to the previous slide, of that 68.7% earnings ratio. That's what it's all about, doing more than required to benefit our students. Definitely very proud of this. Some new information we just got, we're getting into reporting for 17-18, so this is preliminary reporting. The green percentage here, last year, our overall proficiency number was 81.5. We're looking at fall semester last year, have those numbers, and also have now the fall semester of 17's numbers. We're looking at a preliminary gain of 5.4% last year fall semester to this year fall semester. Now, looking, taking that into the southwest region, for the same time period, down 1.8%, and for the state of North Carolina, down 1.4%. So last year was not a fluke. I'm getting ready to throw a major number on you that's going to show you that. But I definitely want you to know where we're at and what we're looking for. It was not a fluke, and it's not a fluke because of the staff we have out there in our schools. So, fourth in the state of North Carolina, 4,285 credentials. Getting ready to show up the preliminary numbers. It's going to be higher. So think of a number that's above 4,285 right now. I guarantee you, you're not going to think this high. Right now, we're looking at 11,100 student-earned credentials for 17-18, and we're not done reporting. That's over two and a half times fourth in the state last year. Number one in the state last year is 10,063. I'm not guaranteeing we're going to be number one, but I will tell you, we're looking good for being better than number four. So definitely super proud of our teachers. Like I said, they are putting in work. Our support staff are making sure they have everything they need to make these students successful. So definitely proud of this preliminary reporting and looking forward to the final report, which we will get sometime in January next year. So that's great. That's what we do in the classrooms, but that's not what we're all about. CTE is about the additional opportunity, connecting the dots between the classroom and then the experiences beyond that. When you graduate or when you go to college, and then look at a career opportunity and career exposure, what do we do that sets us above and beyond what it takes inside the classroom and connecting those dots outside the classroom? And really, this goes for all of our education in all of our core classes, math, science, social studies. You need that knowledge to be proficient out in the real world. One of the things we're doing is more and more internships. I can go ahead and tell you, the economy's doing great because I take phone calls nonstop. We need interns, we need apprentices, and we need full-time employees. Can you send us those? Can we come out and talk to your students? Do not need to look at anything on the news to figure out how great the economy's doing, at least in Gaston County. Internships, we're having more and more industries reach out to us and say, can you establish an internship program that will specifically here at A&E and Rochling, get us those serious students that are seniors that are going to graduate. We want to start them at full-time pay, paid internship, full-time payment that they would get if they were a full-time employee. Find us those students. We sent them 30 students to intern. And this is just one of the things that we're proud of. One of the things that really hammers at home, makes you proud to be an educator when you step back and say, this is what my job is about. Sometimes you throw in some curveballs that may be a little challenging, but this is what it's all about, too. This is a handwritten note sent to one of our career development coordinators inside of our school from a student that was afforded one of those internships I just highlighted. Took out the names just for, you know, privacy concerns, but, "Dear blank, thank you for helping me with my internship. Thanks to you. Soon as I get done with school, I will have a full-time job, seven days a week. Thank you, blank." It's supposed to be five days a week, but at the same time, we provide an opportunity for this student, and that I guarantee you, knowing that background history, that opportunity probably wouldn't have not been able to take advantage of without this being out there. On top of that, our support staff, our career development coordinators, that are not only helping our teachers, but are helping our students. This was just given to me last week. This is another one that wraps it all up in a tidy package and puts a bow on it and said, that's what it's all about. "I didn't know if there was a way to share this story somehow with CTE in our county. One of my FUDS two students was offered a job at the Food Line Bakery because of the internship she completed there and the fact that she obtained her Safe Certification. The manager indicated to both myself and the student, that's difficult to get a job in the bakery at such a in the bakery at such a young age. They said she has shown great skills during her internship, and they will therefore not have to train her as much because she already has most of the training required. The Certified Safe Certification enabled her to get more money per hour than the average person. Just thought I would share." Foods one of the, and two, Nutrition Teacher for CTE. That's what it's all about. Taking everything you've learned, taking everything and all the opportunities you've been given, and it already paying off for you, and you're not even now and graduated yet. More money, already introduced to the job that most people can't get, and they're still in high school. So very proud of this, proud of what our teachers and our support staff have done to make this opportunity reality for those particular students. On top of that, Career Exposure Events. Four years ago, we had one large-scale career exposure event, sent 400 high school students to Manufacturing Career Expo at Gaston College. Now we're at seven. We just added another one last week that I want to show you. In chronological order, with pictures to match, at the bottom, educators in the workplace, we do that every summer, 10, excuse me, 10 to 15 businesses that allow 40 to 50 educators to come around and visit them, learn from them, figure out what the entry points are, pay, education required for that, and then take that honest, excuse me, that relevant information they just learned hands-on and present to their students to give them exactly what's out there, not the hearsay or what I think's available. In the middle, Textiles Day, first time ever offering at Kimbrel, excuse me, Kimball College, three students worth, excuse me, three schools worth of students visiting there to learn from local textiles manufacturers, what opportunities are available to them upon graduation and even with internship opportunities. To the right, first time ever Career, excuse me, Karamot Career Awareness Days, four-day event for all of our health sciences students at all 10 of our high schools to learn exactly what's offered at Karamot. Remember, we teeter back and forth between the largest employers in the county, Karamot and Gaston County Schools, and a lot of students think it's just nurses or just doctors. All of our students going over there to learn exactly about all the opportunities available to them. To the left, students at work, second time at every single eighth grader in the county, 2,100 students going to 25 businesses in the eighth grade, just as an exposure event to let them see what's out there in their community, what is the offering to them whenever they start thinking about CTE courses in the high schools. This is our students at Duke Power. At the middle, our still longest-running, large-scale career opportunity event, Career Awareness Event, Manufacturing Career Expo. This year, we add an additional 400 students, 400 middle school students, and 400 high school students to Gaston College. The employers were, the teachers for the day and the students rotated around them to 20-minute intervals to learn what it is they have to offer them. The bottom, the first time ever event, Construction Careers Awareness Day, another one of those students being exposed to trades in industry occupations and opportunities available to them, 800 students, 250 middle, 550 high school students. And to the right, brand new, just happened last week, some of y'all were there, our Career Signing Day. We do a college signing day all the time, but what about beyond that? Ultimately, the goal is to be successful in a career. Sometimes it takes additional education to do that, and sometimes you have students that want to go out there and be successful from the get-go. This is just to highlight and make, let these students know, we're proud of them for what they're doing and the opportunities they have available to them. I want to show you 25-second clip that wraps it up perfectly from the student himself that allows you to just see what that opportunity was about and how much they enjoyed it and how proud we are of them.
Well, really, I grew up with Dad. My father was a contractor for the first 10 years of my life, so always knew that blue collar was kind of going to be my thing just because I grew up in it. I didn't think the collar was going to be for me. I was accepted to multiple colleges, but I just felt like with the, the lack of people going into trade jobs right now, it's always going to be in demand, everybody wants to keep heating cool, and so I figured, job I can always have, and once you get knowledge in that stuff, nobody can ever take it away from you.
Right there, wrapped it up in 25 seconds. That's what it's all about. Realize opportunities, realize the value of having a skill. He'll always be successful if he gets this information. And already has a job lined up, very proud of that. Like I said, very well-educated student, but at the same time realizes opportunity when he sees it, and he's taking advantage of it. On top of Career Awareness Events, what else? You heard me say, we get all over $10 million to do everything and anything we'd like in CTE, but what if we want to do more? Unfortunately, we can't just call DPI or legislators and say, give me some more money, we're going to do some great things. I think it would work well, but obviously it hasn't worked that way yet. So we go out there and look for additional opportunities. We have secured a $634,000 Golden Leaf Grant for events manufacturing that allowed us to install two brand-new events manufacturing programs at Bessemer City High School and Hunter Huss High School. Realize this whole program is just in its second year of infancy, so it was just piloted two years ago. We got into that, got a grant for it, and now we offer it. On top of that, we received $100,000 donation from Daimler to outfit these two events manufacturing classrooms. You can see from this picture here, from the Gaston Gazette, those monies were used to outfit the classroom, paint them in industrial gray, put LED lighting on them, some vinyl posters, letting everyone, the students see what's inside of Daimler. On top of, there's a thumbprint biometric scanner for the students to clock in and out of every day to kind of simulate what you would do in advanced manufacturing environment. Daimler's also talked to us about establishing a pipeline of students that could go here and then come and work for them. We introduced them to some students last week at Hunter Huss about some internship opportunities, definitely some excitement there, once they heard the dollars they were talking about for an internship program. Something else, brand new, just heard about this last week, from our Advanced Manufacturing, Manufacturing Career Expo, the longest-running opportunity we have this year, and they're going to be presenting this at Huss tonight and all 10 of our high schools. From the money raised from that, our businesses that are participating in that donate money. We took all of that money and turned it into a $750 scholarship at all 10 of our high schools for students to attend Gaston College. So not only trying to recruit these students to be employed with them, but they're also trying to recruit them to better themselves and provide that $750 opportunity. Two students who attended this event, seniors graduating. And the last thing, we provided $5,000 Gaston Together to continue our Educators in the Workplace Event, and those funds will be used to support that coming this summer. So what are we going to do for 1819? You heard me say, we got some awesome teachers, awesome support staff. To keep them at that level, we're going to have to do professional development, always at the forefront, always be a focus. 90% of the funds will be for our staff and then professional development. Program enhancements, technology updates, career and technical student organizations, FCCLA, FBLA, TSA, Skills USA, HOSA, having national competitors in all of those. On top of that, double the amount of volume just two years ago from now for those opportunities for students and continue to push that moving forward. Our CTE Business Advisory Council, you heard about that, will continue to work with them next year. School Choice Programs, CTE's always at the forefront for that, our Stanley Steam Academy, Project Lead the Way Engineering, our coding will be offered there also next year, also at East Gaston, a Health Sciences Academy-focused, we'll be offering two new programs there, EMT and Pharmacy Tech. And then in-facility CNA testing at multiple schools, Certified Nursing Assistant, that's offered to all 10 of our high schools, one of the largest offerings in the state of North Carolina. Last year, repiloted the in-facility Certified Nursing Assistant Testing at Hunter Huss, 100% skills pass rate. I just did this two Saturdays ago, 100% skills pass rate. You can see the importance of it. That's why we've added three more in-facility testing sites to a total of four to this point in time in Gaston County Schools. They're certified by the state to allow us to test our students in a comfortable area that they are used to, which is the schools they learn in every day. We'll add a fifth one next year. Five total in-facility testing sites, 10 total high schools, two schools paired up per testing site, looking for the outcomes and the certifications produced for that. And then lastly, you heard me say this earlier, State Pilot and Teaching as a Profession. 16 clusters, 14 with curriculum. They're going to pilot the 15th next year, which is education. Basically, you can think of this as a teacher cadet program offered by CTE. We were accepted in the pilot because, like you've heard me say multiple times, we have great teachers. We had one of the special teachers that not only had a family consumer science license, but also a master's in education. We were selected to offer that next year, and that will take place at East Gaston High School, along with the two other offerings they have there. Hopefully, you think that's prodigious, what we did. If not, I don't know how to wow you, but I'm, I'm very proud of what we have done and our teachers and our support staff. And at that time, at this time, you have any questions for me?
Fabulous job. It's just amazing.
Yes.
CTE is so important, and I appreciate the value you put on it, and the value our host is, and middle schools doing a good job.
And honestly, it's, I appreciate the support. I've worked in a different district, and I can tell you, from, you know, my direct supervisor to cabinet, to assistant superintendent, to superintendent, and a school board, I've never experienced so much support. One person doesn't do this, just one staff doesn't do this. This is the top-down, everyone's on board, everybody's proud of it, and that's what it takes to be truly this great.
I'll just say, as Mr. Buchanan said in his presentation, this ties into our strategic plan. When we went out, the business leaders and the county commissioners and everybody told us, and I'm one of these guys that uses the old word vocational education, and we kept, we kept hearing that we need vocation, we need vocational education. And, and a lot of hard-headed people like me still call it that, but it's CTE. We heard what the community said, the business leaders, and this is the result. I, I am just blown away at where we've come from where we started with CTE education, I'll say it correctly. But seeing the numbers today, just, there's, I don't know what the right word is.
I agree.
Yours is, is beyond amazing and beyond incredible, but I, I am just thrilled with where we are and the business leaders, when they find out and see what we're doing. As you said, your phone's ringing off the hook. That's a testament. Mr. Davis?
I just want to say, I was, I was absolutely struck by the statistic that was about the number of students that are on free and reduced lunch and the number of certifications. That is an absolutely phenomenal number in a county with the challenges that we have. And to be able to take kids with those challenges in their life and to lift them up and to have them ready to go out into the workplace and live better than they have been raised in conditions that are better than they are being raised in, is truly taking care of the least of these and a phenomenal thing that we're doing, and, and I want to congratulate you, every one of your teachers and staff, because that is truly providing service to those children as well as this county and this community, and it's phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal.
Thank you, sir.
And I did these, I'm sorry if I said it wrong. I was just looking for other words, monumental, mountain, in order, colossal, fantastic, tremendous, et cetera. So it was fantastic.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I trust everyone's had a chance to look through that. This is an action item. Motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Ramsey. Any comments or discussion about the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Mr. Booker, that brings us to the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have a lot to be proud of. I appreciate these presentations, and, and you see from the elementary all the way through the high school, the work that is going on in our schools. I would encourage our community to continue to support us. Right now is the time where test proctors are of great value to us, and so anyone that is willing to serve as a proctor and volunteer that way, we would appreciate that. You can call their neighborhood school and offer their services, because as we enter in EOGs and EOCs, we'll need all of that support. And when we talk about our community, I spoke with many of you over the weekend, the things that went on last week in our nation continue to highlight the importance of school safety. We take school safety very seriously, and we work hand-in-hand. This morning, the county police chief and his whole leadership team were in this room with our leadership team to talk about safety and what we can do to ensure that our schools are safe for our students, parents, employees. So what we need is the entire community to recognize it takes the community being vigilant and paying attention to the things that are going on, and to help all of us make our schools safe. We probably don't do this enough, but I want to recognize all of our school resource officers. They give long hours, they do things beyond what they're compensated for because they know they contribute to the value of our education. And so for all of those resource officers that serve and to law enforcement that do many things, I have two of the chiefs calling me over the weekend to say, we're going to increase patrols in schools this week just to remind people that we're there and we support that. And so our schools today, as they came in, there were a lot of police cars parked and moving through our parking lots throughout the day to remind folks that law enforcement is supporting your public schools. And so we're just honored by that, and we need to recognize that. So when you see an officer out, don't be afraid to thank them for what they do to support us. Earlier tonight, I made recognition of Delise McLean for her recognition as the Gaston County Principal of the Year. There were a number of other folks recognized at our evening of excellence. We want to, first of all, thank Wells Fargo. That is something that through the years, they have been very proud to support for us, and they do it in a way that allows our folks to know they are appreciated. And so this is a longstanding partnership that we very much appreciate. So we want to congratulate, if you didn't get a chance to see her interview, it was phenomenal, Carmen Adams of Belmont Central Elementary, and how she talks about her growth and her professional career, and then what she gives back to her students. And so she will be a great representative as our Gaston County Teacher of the Year. Megan LaFeveres, who has already been recognized nationally and, and the state, it's only fitting that she was recognized by our county as the Assistant Principal of the Year, and so we're excited for that. And then finally, when you look at our central office administrators, there was a great number of qualified folks, but Carrie Minnick was recognized for her service as our Executive Director of Exceptional Children. So all of those awards were presented at the night of excellence, and we appreciate you all supporting us in that night with your attendance. We also recognized our bond committee earlier. I want to thank really some other folks that worked really hard, and that's our schools. We had great support in our schools with talking and being prepared to talk about their needs and what their school would benefit from the bonds. And all that work really goes back to an individual sitting at the end of that table over there, Todd Hagens. And Todd worked tirelessly, a lot of late nights, because, you know, he has a full-time job here, and he would work weekends. I'd get a call, will you go look at this, I've sent you something. And he just spent a lot of time and energy, and he had a lot of critics that were giving him feedback on his work, and he took it in stride, and I believe the information he gave was very critical to our bonds passing. And so, Todd, we appreciate what you did. And of course, his team, Tom Video, et cetera, it's a whole team that did that. But we just appreciate the committee and what they did and the overwhelming support talks about, just as our teachers were here talking about the support they felt from this board, our community has supported us. So with all that, this is the last time you will meet as a board prior to the end of school, and it's an exciting time of the year, and we're all looking forward to Saturday, June 9th. I will remind all those seniors, you've still got a few more things to do, finish strong, finish strong, please. Mr. Montgomery likes that late night when we're all here making sure we've gotten through those last folks, but we encourage our parents to encourage your children to finish strong and, and attend school. So we appreciate all that the class of 2018 has done. They are a remarkable class, and when you see the accomplishments, it is impressive, and we are honored to have served them. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments, but we do need a closed session. You wanted to offer some additional?
Ms. Guster?
Well, I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the graduation early college at Gaston College on Thursday.
Yes, that's true. Last Thursday night, we were at the early college. We had over 30 students earn both an Associate's of Arts and an Associate's of Science degree. So they get two degrees from Gaston College, and that was very impressive and had a tie for salutatorian and valedictorian. It's just a great night, and what a great partnership to see that, and those kids, and the scholarships earned over a million dollars in those 40-some graduates.
And that's the largest group we have, right?
Yes, and that's the largest group of graduates we've had. So Ms. White and her team do a great job. So that's a good catch, thank you. But with that, I would ask for a closed session, sir.
Mr. Booker, for those present, will there be any action required after we come out of the executive meeting?
Yes, sir, there will be several action points.
All right, with that, we'll need a motion to go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A3 for consultation with attorney in order to consult with the attorney to protect attorney-client privilege and to receive advice with respect to the lawsuit caption, Dr. James Robert White versus the Gaston County Board of Education, and Board of Education and North Carolina General Statute 143 dot 311, 318 dot 11, paragraph A6 for personnel. We do not need to go into closed session for property. You can strike that on your agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Ramsey, second by Mr. Moore. All those in favor, and we are going into executive session. All those in favor, and we are going into executive session.[166.68]